Oh, this is for you. I'm sorry. Let's see, I guess I ought to...
Sharon Morgan.
Where is it?
Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Adam Garvin, Adam Garvin. I thought these were mine.
Oh.
Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine. Adam, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Can't complain. Sorry, Geralta. I thought these were mine.
Camping ordinance will move forward. This evening on our consent agenda, we have two items in front of us. The first is an OLCC limited on-premise license request from the Tiger Walk McMinnville LLC located at 913 North Highway 99W. And secondarily, we have a resolution number 2018-45, a resolution approving three exemptions to public contracting rules for the water reclamation facility, tertiary treatment expansion project pursuant to ORS 279C or DOT 345. Is there any counselor that would like to take anything off of our consent agenda this evening?
Mayor?
Yes.
Maybe we should take another look at, anytime we have exemptions concerning public property that we should probably take another look at.
Okay. So would you like to take that off?
I'd like to take that off, or have it covered by Mr. Bisson at this time.
Why don't we go ahead and just take care of the OLCC as a consented agenda item, and then we'll make that the first discussion in our resolutions tonight, okay, Alan? Okay?
Yeah, I move that we accept the consent agenda as amended.
Okay. It's been Kelly moved and Sal seconded that we consider the consent ejected as amended. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by saying nay. And the consent agenda passes unanimously this evening. That takes us to then the first of a number of resolutions that we're going to be talking about this evening, and that is going to be Resolution 2018-45. And Mike, I'll just call on you to update us a little bit on that. Go ahead if you would.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'll refer you to the brief staff report that's in your packet from Engineering Services Manager Rich Baufford regarding the tertiary expansion project at the treatment plant. What you have before you this evening is exemptions to competitive bidding. Specifically, we're recommending that we sole source specific equipment related to that expansion project, and then that equipment will be specified in the contract documents that will be advertised for public bidding, and we'll receive competitive quotes for the actual construction. The three elements that are in front of you have to do with the ultraviolet disinfection system that we'll be upgrading. There was a selection process evaluating different vendors that provide that type of disinfection, and it was determined that Trojan Technologies, who has the current technology at the plant, which is outdated and needs to be replaced, is the preferred vendor to supply the new system. Specifically, it fits within the channels at the treatment plant, and modifications to the channel aren't necessary to accommodate their upgraded equipment. The second had to do with modifying the tertiary filters at the treatment plant, specifically the Parkson filters that are at the plant. We'll be retrofitting those existing filters with an Eco Wash system. And again, we're recommending that we specify that vendor as it fits within the existing filter package that we have at the plant. And then lastly, we've asked that there are specific gates that are involved, valves that are involved in the tertiary treatment system, and just for consistency with other valves at the plant, we've asked that we be allowed to specify those gate actuators to be Rotork IQ series gates. That allows us to stock replacement parts and have the same gates actuators as we do in other parts of the treatment plant system. So Engineering Manager Rich Baufford, in conjunction with Consulting Engineer Jacobs, worked with City Attorney Kosch to develop the appropriate resolution and exemption forms for your consideration that will allow us to specify that equipment and proceed with bidding the project work in October.
Mike, I apologize for this, because I'm looking at the packet and I just noticed it now. It does not appear that all of the exemption forms got included properly within the packet. I only see the exemption form for Trojan. I don't see the one for Eco Wash or Rotork. I'm not sure what happened there in the transmission to Melissa, but the resolution covers all three, but the exemption forms didn't get transmitted properly.
So certainly, we could pull this item and bring it back at the next meeting with the proper exemption forms in it. I apologize for that.
Yeah. I apologize, I didn't catch that before.
Would that be what you would suggest, David?
Yeah, the exemption forms contain the specific findings associated with the recommendations for sole source contract signed by the project manager, and so those should be before the council at the time they consider the resolution. And all three of those exhibits are referenced in the resolution, but only one of them
Is attached?
Was properly attached, correct.
So, Mike, the work's been done, just so that that, as we put the packets together at our next meeting, then we will have that full. But I will, just in view of an opportunity that you've made that presentation, any questions of Mike on this resolution 2018-45? Alan?
Yeah, just, Mike, just to clarify, thank you for that. Is exemption for awarding the request for proposal and just assigning this work to someone?
No, again, we'll have a construction contract for the tertiary treatment expansion project that will involve installation of these various technologies, as well as the associated work to retrofit existing systems, piping, electrical, all of that. That work will be publicly bid. What this exemptions will allow us to do is specify a specific brand name for specific equipment, a part of the expansion. So, for example, it would be like specifying, I want a Ford Ranger pickup, a very specific brand name for a specific piece of equipment associated with the construction work. Construction work itself will be competitively bid.
Otherwise, the bidders can come up with a like or similar product on their own.
That allowance is still contained within the contract. They have to demonstrate compliance with or equal to the equipment we're specifying.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other questions of Mike? Again, let Rich know that his write-up was very specific and direct, and it brought all those areas to light. So, thank Rich, and then we'll just...
Yeah, apologies for the packet mix.
Well, we'll have that come at our next council meeting, and we'll be prepared for that then. Thank you. Our next resolution this evening is Resolution 2018-46, a resolution approving the donation of a temporary easement to the Oregon Department of Transportation for the Three Mile Lane Bridge Replacement Project. And so I'll call on Community Development Director Mike Bisson to make a presentation. I also will just make a note that very late this evening, I think it was a little after five o'clock, the council received an email from the pastor of the church, the community church, and I forwarded that to Mike, and if you could even address that. So, we knew, we know that there was a conversation that was had. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Again, I'll refer you to the staff report that's in your packet and the associated resolution and exhibits to the resolution. As you noted, this is regarding to the need, ODOT's need to have temporary construction easements from city park property to facilitate the bridge replacement project. The city is proposing to donate those easements to ODOT. We will be having an intergovernmental agreement with ODOT regarding the project, and we'll be specifying within that intergovernmental agreement the restoration requirements within the easement itself. As the mayor noted, you did receive an email this evening from Pastor Jeff Claybaugh. I was able to respond to him. I know he's here this evening. I think we've clarified the exhibits for him and cleared up the confusion related to the parcels. And essentially, what the issue is, the two areas from city park property are labeled with a Circle One and a Circle Two, and those are described as Parcel One and Parcel Two in your exhibit. And the associated square footages are shown 3,653 square feet from Parcel One and 14,574 square feet from Parcel Two. ODOT confused issues by labeling the church's property 002, that's not the same as Parcel Two that's in the description of the easement. That is contained on city park property. So, that's the clarifying factor there. And unless there are any questions or testimony from the church, I would recommend that the council adopt the resolution as proposed.
Thank you, Mike. Before we have a discussion with the council, does the church want to make any statement, or was that clarification appropriate enough to...
The church is satisfied with Mr. Bisson's clarification.
Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate you bringing it to our attention, and we just happened to catch it quickly tonight so that we could address it. So, thank you. So, any questions of Jeff from the council?
Just a quick one.
Go ahead, Alan.
Mike, is these easements, will they revert back to the city of McMinnville at a future date?
Yeah, they're temporary easements that are, for the duration of the project, are five years.
Five years.
It just gives them the ability to construct the improvements, and then areas return to the city at the conclusion of the work.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion.
So moved.
Okay, and a second. Alan has moved and Kelly has seconded. All those in favor of approving Resolution 2018-46, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, indicate by saying nay. This Resolution 2018-46 passes unanimously six to six. That takes us to our next resolution this evening of 2018-47, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the city of McMinnville and McMinnville Water and Light related to the conditions assessment of city and McMinnville Water and Light facilities. And so we'll call on Mike to address this on this.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Once again, I'll refer you to the staff report that's in your packet, as well as a copy of the resolution authorizing the intergovernmental agreement between the city and McMinnville Water and Light. This is the first of two resolutions related to facilities condition assessment work. The city initiated a request for quotes, or request for qualifications, excuse me, process to seek a qualified firm to perform condition assessment on 57 city-owned buildings and structures. At the conclusion of that process, McMinnville Water and Light inquired about the ability to add their facilities, specifically four facilities at their main campus, to the work so that they can take advantage of the consultant being in town assessing cities' buildings. We prepared an intergovernmental agreement to that effect. The consultant was agreeable to doing the work, and I believe that at their meeting last week, the Water and Light Commission approved the agreement. And so by this action, this evening, you're approving the intergovernmental agreement, and your next resolution will consider the actual contract with the firm that will be doing the condition assessment. So, unless there are any questions, I'd recommend you adopt the resolution authorizing the intergovernmental agreement.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions of Mike?
Just a comment, I assume this is a part of the strategic plan that we've been working on, correct?
Absolutely, that's a great point, and I'll go into a little more detail, not much, but a little more detail in the next resolution presentation on the scope of work. But absolutely, as part of the strategic planning process and the budget process this year, it was an important need for the city to identify the conditions of our owned facilities and identify what the maintenance needs are for those facilities. And that resolution that you will consider next includes that scope of work.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Only comment that I have, as Mike indicated, last Tuesday evening at the McMinnville Water and Light Commission meeting, we had a healthy discussion on this, and we passed that resolution within the Water and Light unanimously to sign. And so today, I pinned my signature on behalf of Water and Light for the intergovernmental agreement. So, I think with this, it gets us where we need to go. So, I'll take a motion.
I'm moved.
And it has been moved by Adam and seconded by Wendy. All those in favor of approving Resolution 2018-47, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Resolution 2018-47 passes unanimously six to six. That takes us to our next resolution, 2018-48, a resolution awarding the personal service contract for the comprehensive professional condition assessment of the city and Water and Light. We did that one, didn't we? Nope. Okay, this is...
The Water and Light one, yes.
Yes, yes.
No, this is the one actually awarding the personal service contract.
Okay, to E and G, okay. Personal condition assessment of the city and McMinnville Water and Light facility. And so we'll again call on Mike to present this to the council.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Again, I'll refer you to your staff report, as well as the personal services contract and detailed scope of work related to this facility's condition assessment. There are 57 buildings on 25 different sites totaling nearly 370,000 square feet of building space that the city owns, and there are four buildings on one site totaling just over 42,000 square feet for McMinnville Water and Light buildings. This work includes a very detailed facility condition assessment and an inventory of assets within those facilities specifically related to building equipment, whether it be HVAC, electrical, plumbing, et cetera. It also includes the development of preventative maintenance plans for those facilities, and it includes a seismic analysis of the Water and Light facilities and the community center, the wastewater administration building, and the Oregon State Police Building at the airport. The conditions assessments themselves are quite detailed. The consultant will be on-site with a team analyzing each facility and developing a condition assessment for city's consideration that will let you know the condition of those facilities, ongoing maintenance needs, capital improvement needs, and will be the first comprehensive list of facility assets that the city has, and will provide a very good snapshot of what our unfunded maintenance needs are, as well as our unfunded capital needs are related to those facilities. Certainly, some facilities, such as this building, the police building, will be much easier to assess as they're quite new, but buildings such as City Hall and some of the facilities in our parks will be a little... Chamber Building is another example, where we'll have a pretty detailed list of maintenance needs and capital needs for those facilities. We did a request for proposals process for, to seek a qualified consultant. We received five responses to that RFP. There was a selection team of city staff, including myself, Fire Chief Rich Leifert, Parks and Rec Director Susan Muir, Public Works Superintendent David Renshaw, and Police Department Facilities Maintenance Tech Ron Ponto. Those proposals were scored, and EMG was the highest-ranked proposer. We then began contract negotiations with EMG to settle on a scope of work for the facility assessment. And what you have before you this evening is, within the budget that we have allocated for fiscal year 19, it includes about $104,700 worth of work for the city and $23,600 worth of work for Water and Light totaling a contract amount of $128,300. The work is expected to be completed by the end of the calendar year to better inform our fiscal year 2020 budget process. So, unless there are any questions, staff would recommend that you adopt the resolution entering into the contract with EMG.
Thank you, Mike. And as Kelly had mentioned, this is, I think, something that we have waited for quite a while to assess the condition of our buildings under ownership by the city. And so with that, I'll open it up to anyone that would have questions of Mike on this process. We have the dollars, we have the proposal of work attached with our materials tonight.
I just had one, Mayor.
Go ahead, Alan.
Mike, is it, was this mandated? Is it something the state requires that municipalities to do this, or do we just take this upon ourselves to play catch-up on our buildings?
It's not a mandated action. It is probably a long overdue prudent action for us to be able to inform you as policymakers and the citizens what our facility needs are and allow us to appropriately discuss maintenance levels. It'll also allow for, as we move forward with facility planning, say for Parks and Rec, once we know the condition of our Parks and Rec facilities, we'll be able to have discussions regarding, is it appropriate to upgrade those facilities, or should we be looking at new facilities instead? So, I think it'll be a very informative amount of work that we receive that will help us prioritize and appropriately fund maintenance of facilities that are under city ownership.
How long is the project?
Well, the contractor told me 45 days. I believe that's a little bit aggressive, but I'm hoping that by the holiday season, we'll have a completed assessment work so that as we roll over into next calendar year and start budgeting for the following fiscal year, we can have that information for the council and for city department use.
And is there a cap on how many days the project can last that they have to deliver the results by?
So, the personal services contract that's in your packet, I believe, has the December 31 completion date in it. Let me verify that for you. It does, a December 31 completion date.
So, sometime between 45 days from, if this...
So, we're going to bring them to town and pick one facility and have them do an assessment and draft the report for us to review, and that way we can see if it's getting everything we're expecting, if we want to make changes to how they're doing their assessments and the reporting that they're providing. And then we're going to incrementally roll out and address the other facilities that are in the plan. So, with 61 some total buildings, it's quite a bit of work, but EMG has the resources to mobilize to address our needs within the timeframe that we've given them.
Okay. Are there any sites or buildings that they're not going to be looking at that are city-owned in this, or is it all city-owned sites?
As far as I know, this includes everything that the city owns, including picnic shelters. So, if you look at the list of facilities at the end of their contract, it's quite extensive, and it includes everything that we're aware of that's under city ownership, including hangars at the airport, restroom facilities.
Thank you.
Yeah, the only thing I didn't see was down at Joe Dancer, but that's a temporary, the concession, is that down there all the time, the concession wagon, or...
They actually haven't, that was a privately-owned concession building, and they actually haven't had a concession air down at Dancer for a number of years.
Okay, okay. Any other questions? Adam?
How do we come to just those three buildings being seismic? Obviously, what they house is of relative importance, but they all vary in age. So, are those the only three buildings left in the city inventory that need that, or did we just have that in the budget to only do three seismic buildings?
So, it's a combination of both of those things. Our newer facilities, such as this building, the police building, were designed under those seismic requirements. There's an upgrade that's been done at the library. We put a call out to department heads asking if they had facilities that they wanted seismically analyzed. It's an expensive, the Tier One work is expensive. And we picked the community center since it houses the backbone of the city's data network. We picked wastewater services building because it's an alternate emergency operations center in an emergency situation. And we picked the Oregon State Police Building since it's a critical facility, and that's a critical function that's served out of that space. And so that kept us within budget. So, it was a combination of what facilities do we think need it, some don't, and what can we afford.
Thank you.
And then, Mike, let me add to that. There are some state grant funds available to reimburse the city for seismic assessment for fire departments, and so we're actually going to be pursuing that seismic review of the fire department under a separate program and a separate agreement. Some of the other facilities are old enough and have enough deferred maintenance that we may be faced with a, do we invest in this building, or do we not? And if we decide not to invest in a building and either relinquish it or replace it, then you don't have to do a seismic upgrade. We could always do a seismic assessment of buildings that we choose to keep in our inventory at a later time.
Thank you. And my next question is, how detail-oriented do you anticipate these assessments to be? I mean, I've seen home inspections that are 10 pages, and I've seen home inspections that are 180 pages, both on 10-year-old homes. So, I mean, do you anticipate this is just surface level and snapping photos and walking the roof, or are they actually doing pretty detailed work for this amount of money?
Yeah. Turn the mic on. If you get back to about page five of their proposal, it includes a description of services and includes the detailed items that will be gathered. They did include an example report in their proposal to us that helped us determine that they were the firm that we wanted to choose. At the council's interest, I certainly can share that example report they did, but each facility is going to get a very detailed, comprehensive report that is going to list each piece of equipment, its age, its condition, its preventative maintenance needs, and perhaps its deferred capital needs as well. So, expect it to be quite informed. And then that data can be inserted into what we call a computerized maintenance management system, CMMS, and facilitate moving forward with a maintenance plan for each facility that staff can automate when certain things are going to be needed to be done, and also populate what the maintenance procedures are for those specific pieces of equipment.
Thank you. I know when I came on council, the status of our buildings was pretty shocking when I first started going around, so I know this is overdue, and I look forward to the report.
Thank you, Adam. Any other questions or clarifications?
Just a little clarification, Mike. So, when we hire someone to come up with the recommendations, we probably have to listen to recommendations to a certain extent, and maybe create a to-do list after it's all done and where we're going to get the funds. Is that the next step after their assessment?
I think that's a fair pathway for us. I think the first thing we need to do to be able to inform you as policymakers and budget adopters is what are the needs? And then we have to balance what those needs are versus what we can afford within the budgets we have. And much like we budget for all of our services, there will be decision points. I'm certain that we're not going to be able to correct everything immediately, so we'll have to develop a plan for addressing those maintenance needs. And there may be, as City Manager Towery noted, some facilities that, given the list of needs, we may choose that it's unwise to invest in addressing all those needs, and it may be more wise to pursue an alternate facility.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I will take a motion.
It's a move.
Second.
It's been moved by Kelly and seconded by Adam that we approve Resolution 2018-48. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying nay. This Resolution 2018-48 passes unanimously six to six. That takes us to our next resolution, 2018-49, a resolution authorizing the release of an existing power line easement located in the city of McMinnville, Yamhill County, Oregon. Mike, I'll have you bring us up to speed on that.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. This action before you this evening is the release of an unneeded power line easement that's encumbering McMinnville Plaza, specifically Tax Lot Range Four West, I'm just going to say 4-4, 15 BB, Tax Lot 100. This easement was created as part of vacation ordinance related to the vacation of 27th Street. At that time, there were overhead power lines that crossed the site. Those lines have since been moved, and the applicant has worked with Water and Light to get their approval to release the power easement. As the city council is the body that created the easement, the city council is the body that... that will release this easement, and what you have before you this evening is a resolution and legal description, a map describing the release of that easement. Also included in your packet is a note from McMinnville Water and Light indicating that they are accepting of the easement release. And so, unless there are any questions, I would recommend the council adopt the resolution releasing the unneeded power line easement.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions or discussion among the council on resolution twenty-eighteen dash forty-nine?
Is, is this easement release a trigger for the sign enforcement of the sign ordinance? Can this be used to trigger that?
I'm not involved in the sign ordinance.
But Heather's sitting over there.
No.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Remy and seconded by Adam, that we approve resolution twenty-eighteen dash forty-nine. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please indicate by saying nay. And so, we have an all aye?
Aye, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I heard, I heard some noise over there. So, we have resolution twenty-eighteen dash forty-nine passing unanimously six to six. Resolution twenty-eighteen dash fifty is a resolution authorizing the release of an existing public walkway easement located in the city of McMinnville, Yamhill County, Oregon. Mike, if you would address this to us?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Again, I'll refer you to your staff report, which includes a site map showing the location of the, a portion of the walkway easement that is being requested to be released. It's in the vacated Newby Street right-of-way that was created by ordinance thirty-seven forty-eight, adopted by the city council in nineteen-seventy-five. At that time, a piece of, Newby Street between First and Third Street was vacated, and Second Court, or Second Street between, between its current terminus and to the west, the Newby Street was vacated. At that time, the council, as part of that vacation process, retained a ten-foot-wide public walkway easement over those vacated areas with the intention of creating a walkway between the end of Second Court and First Street. That walkway was never developed and has never been in place. The property owner on First Street is concerned about the liability of a public easement on her property for an undeveloped walkway, and who's liable if somebody's in that space and gets hurt, and has asked the city to release that space since the walkway has not been developed since nineteen-seventy-five. We did notify the neighborhood that this proposal would be in front of the city council. You do have testimony from Eric Van Dyke, who lives at fourteen-ten Northeast Second Court. He's the neighbor to the north, indicating that they use that walkway to access First Street, and his email notes that he, that they use that space to drive a pickup to get tree trimmings and bushes to be able to haul them out. The walkway easement was never intended to be a vehicle easement, but that is noted that's how they have used that. They've been at the property since nineteen-ninety-three. After we received Mr. Van Dyke's email, I did go and take some photos of the space so that the council has a little more context. So, this is the site map. Is there a laser thing on? Probably not, huh? Okay. So, at the bottom of the picture where it says photo one, is the property where the homeowner is asked that the easement be released. I'll then walk you through two photos that are along that pathway area, and then I'll show you the fourth photo, which is a view from the end of Second Court, which is supposed to include a ten-foot walkway east-west connecting to the former Newby Street right-of-way. So, here's photo one, that's the space looking, I'm standing in First Street looking north. It's a very, it's an overgrown space with a very narrow, unimproved pathway in it. I move north along that area and come to the Van Dyke property, and they have a fence along the easement area that does have a gate in it that allows them to go from their backyard into the easement area. And then, I move a little farther north along the property, and I hit a wall of vegetation. If there were a ten-foot walkway developed in the space, it would continue north past this picture to an east-west location that would connect over to Second Court, and this is, oops, what the end of Second Court looks like. So, where the basketball hoop is permanently installed would be about the center line of the ten-foot walkway, and five feet on either side into the lean-to that's built on the right, and where the trailer is parked on the left, would be a ten-foot walkway expanding to Newby Street. So, that pathway was never constructed and is not in place.
And again, the easement is only that first ten feet that goes from First, which was that unimproved photo number one?
It extends clear along the Van Dyke property, and then turns east-west, and is supposed to connect out here to Second Court. What's being asked to be released this evening is the piece that's on the property adjacent to First Street.
Okay, so, the, the yellow dotted line that we see on our map, that's the whole easement, including the red. But all we're talking about tonight is that solid ten feet that starts at, at First Street.
At First Street, that's correct. The property owner, Shalatnik, paid a surveyor to survey the property and develop an easement description, and it requested that that easement area be released. So, that's the action you have before you this evening. As the path has not been improved, staff would recommend you take input from the public, and then consider whether or not that public easement should be released, and I'll defer to the property owners on whether or not there would be an appropriate private easement, perhaps, between the Van Dyke property and First Street that would allow them to continue to use the space, but not the public.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Before we open it up to council for discussion, I do have a public comment card from Shelly Shalnek, Shalnek? And so, Shelly, what we would ask you to do to keep your comments to three minutes this evening, and it's just you, you talking to us, we won't have a dialogue, but it's your comments to us. So, come up, and you can use the microphone set, and welcome.
My name is Shelly Shalnek. Thank you for listening to me. My name's Shelly Shalnek. Thank you very much for letting me speak on this. I bought the property a little less than a year ago, and I had McDonald's surveyor do a survey of my property, and there's a public walkway easement on that side. There's a fence, and then there's, it's like an overgrown driveway, and that's where the public easement for the walkway is. And at the end of my property, there's like a little, a little teeny footpath that goes along the fence of my neighbor to the north of me, and then it ends in kind of overgrown shrub, and you really can't get through it. And so, to use that, it's really, probably my neighbor's the only one who can use it because you can't, you can't get in behind his property from anywhere else on the street. And my concern was, if something happens on that piece of my property, I, I'm pretty sure I'm financially liable for that, but I can't, I can't put anything up saying, "You can't come here because it's an easement." So, I just, I don't want anything to happen, and I really don't wanna get, become financially responsible for something. And I haven't spoken to the neighbors. I haven't been there very long, and I spoke to Mike, who's been very helpful in, like, helping me understand this. So, I can talk to them about the two of us working together. I'm totally fine with that. I just, I don't want the public, I just don't want it to be a public easement, so, that's all.
Thank you, Shelly. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, with that comment, then let's go ahead and just, any questions that the council would have of Mike, or discussions that you might have among yourselves? Anyone?
I do.
Go ahead, Wendy.
Mike, we haven't improved the property, and we also haven't been maintaining it or had anything to do with this easement since it was established. Is that correct? The city as the city? We haven't said?
By knowledge, there, there has never been city maintenance on that space. That's correct.
So, the fact that it's clear is done by somebody else. We haven't done anything with that.
I suspect the Van Dykes are maintaining that piece. There is some irrigation along that fence line, and I think they're probably maintaining across their property, the, cleaning the fence line and maintaining that. As I noted, there's a gate there where they can go in and out of their backyard.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Adam?
Just for clarification, Mike, if we voted to maintain the easement, if all adjacent property owners wanted it abandoned, then it could be abandoned without council approval? Is that how the easements work, or? This is only the second easement that's came in front of myself, I believe.
So, the city council is the, a body that can release easements that are public easements. That's different than public right-of-way, which is specified by state statute that there's a very specific hearing process that takes place regarding street right-of-way vacations, and so, that's the distinction between the two. That's why there's not a formal public hearing this evening, but we did take the time to notify the adjacent property owners. But as the caretaker of the public easement, the council can determine that it's no longer necessary and release it.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not sure that I fully understand if Adam's question was fully answered. What I understood his question to be was if, since this easement only runs along two property lines, if both property owners were to ask for a release of the easement, would, could the easement be released without coming before council?
No, the city council still needs to take action to release public easements. Unlike a street vacation where you have to have a certain number of property owners agree to a street vacation, this is just simply, the public has an interest on someone's property via easement, and the city council has the authority to release that. Certainly, if the Van Dykes came forward and asked for the piece of easement on their property be released, you could consider that as a separate action. What you have before you is just the piece that's on the Shalnek property. That's, she paid for the surveyor to create that, and that's the request that's before you this evening.
And, second question, would easements typically show up in title and escrow and like closing documents, so it's not like it was new information that there's an easement on that property?
I don't know what information showed up in her title report when she purchased the property. She indicated that when she had the property surveyed, the surveyor identified that there was an easement in place that was a result of the vacation process that took place in nineteen-seventy-five. I don't know that that information was in her title report. We'd have to ask her that question.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Just, just to confirm, there's no other public access to that particular easement other than off of the Van Dyke property?
Well, you can't go east-west from Second Court to get to this space. Certainly, I suppose you could crawl through the blackberries at the end there and go a little farther to where that easement is supposed to end to the north, but...
So, no, there's no other?
Correct.
From that, it looks like people do walk through it.
Well, it might be just the Van Dykes, though.
Other questions? Hearing none, I'll take a motion.
I move that we adopt this as presented.
And a second?
Second.
Kelly has moved, and Alan has seconded, that we move forward the motion for resolution twenty-eighteen dash fifty. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, indicate by saying nay.
Nay.
Okay. This resolution passes with a vote of five to one. Again, resolution twenty-eighteen dash fifty. Thank you. Okay, that takes us this evening to our ordinances, and we have a first reading with a possible second reading of ordinance number fifty-fifty-seven. And does any counselor object to having this ordinance read by title only? Hearing none, then we will have the city attorney please read the ordinance into the record.
This is the first reading of ordinance number five-zero-five-seven, an ordinance relating to camping within the city of McMinnville, establishing McMinnville Municipal Code, Chapter eight point three-six.
Thank you, David. We will now call on Planning Director Heather Richards to present to the council.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Excuse me, I apologize in advance. I'm struggling with a summer coat cold tonight, so... But before you is an ordinance that establishes a temporary camping program in McMinnville. It's an ordinance that volunteers in this community have been working on for about a year now as a potential solution for some of our homeless problems that we experience as a community. There's been some erroneous information that's been dispersed throughout the community, so I will beg your pardon, but it takes some time to explain how this was developed and how it's coming to you, and then what the content of the ordinance actually is. So, tonight's discussion is a proposed ordinance that allows temporary camping on private and public property in McMinnville with provisions to mitigate negative impact to surrounding property owners. The intention of it is to provide a system for private and public property owners to step up and provide a safe place for homeless people and their families to camp while in transition and seeking permanent shelter. It's a community recommendation. It's been developed through a series of different committees and public workshops. It's a recommendation that initially developed in the Housing for Homeless Subcommittee, which is comprised of community volunteers and stakeholders who meet regularly and discuss and try and help provide solutions for housing the homeless in McMinnville. The Housing for Homeless Subcommittee is, the Housing for Homeless Subcommittee is a subcommittee of the Affordable Housing Task Force, which was appointed by city council in two thousand and sixteen. The task force decided to put the subcommittee together because they felt that this was a broader discussion in terms of housing for homeless than just the group that was working on the Affordable Housing Task Force. They wanted to open it up to other stakeholders and community members to come around the table and participate in dialogue and brainstorm solutions. And really, that's what the Housing for Homeless Subcommittee is doing. They're striving for solutions for, for what is a really tough problem for our community, for the people experiencing homelessness in communities around the nation. When we first got together as a subcommittee, we knew that we needed to understand a couple of things. We needed to understand what resources are and are not available. We needed to understand who plays what role and has what authorities so that we could come up with solutions, and we needed to understand that there are different populations of homeless people and with different needs. We talked a lot about having balance and management, looking at targeted and responsive solutions, developing a program that's manageable so that it's safe and successful, and finding a balance in bringing a program together that we can, that we can implement. But everything's been focused on being solution-based. So, the program that's being brought to you tonight as part of this ordinance is a recommendation from that effort, and it's defined somewhere for vehicular homeless populations to camp that is safe. That's truly the solution that's being, that's being strived for. With limited resources in this community in terms of hard dollars and construction dollars and services and programs, we had a lot of discussion about what type, what type of solution we can bring to bear that actually has meaningful impact and change. The intention of this program is not that it's a permanent residential solution. It's really a safe place to stay for a period of time for people who are advancing towards permanent shelter, and it's discreet installations throughout the community. We came to this through a couple of different venues. One of the discussions we had when we first formed as a subcommittee is we looked to the state laws and discovered that there's a state law that talks about any political subdivision may allow churches to offer overnight camping space for homeless persons living in vehicles. And then, that law is very specific about how that's done. So, first, the, the city needs to enable it, and then, it must limit the camping space to three or fewer vehicles at the same time and provide campers with access to sanitary At the same time, we looked at our own code and saw that our current code... At the same time, we looked at our own code and saw that our current code does not allow camping in parks without permission of the Parks Director, and our zoning ordinance does not allow campgrounds on private property. So, there were a lot of barriers for bringing this camping program to play. In a discussion around the table with the Housing for Homeless Subcommittee, the city recognized that its role is really to establish those policies and procedures that enable a program. We're not the service providers, but we are able to put the regulatory framework together that removes barriers and opens up opportunities. We looked at policies and procedures that should focus on program success and the mitigation of negative, negative impact to neighboring properties. As a city, we hear from all different factions in the community who are concerned about compassionate, compassion response to the homeless situation in our community, and also concerned about how that impacts other property owners in the city as well. So, our role is really to find a balance within all of that. The ordinance in front of you tonight removes barriers. It enables a temporary camping program, it describes where it's allowed and where it's not allowed, and it establishes provisions to mitigate negative impact on neighboring property owners. It's modeled after a very successful program in Eugene. Eugene has had this program for 20 years, it's now a program that's looked at nationwide as a solution for many communities. Staff and volunteers from McMinnville have been working with staff and volunteers in Eugene for about the past six months, talking about the program, what works in Eugene, what could work in McMinnville. We've brought the Eugene providers and city staff to our community to talk to us in public workshops about their program, what works and what doesn't work, and then also what they think would work here. The ordinance itself establishes a temporary camping program, and what that says is that on any commercial and industrial property, real property for commercial industrial uses, including public property, three vehicles or less, the commercial or industrial property can allow a temporary camping program for three vehicles or less, and it needs to be on a parking lot with a structure. For religious institutions, three vehicles or less, and it needs to be on a parking lot with a structure. And then for vacant property, three vehicles or less, and then it needs to be registered with the city and be part of a supervised program. The provision behind the vacant property is that we want to make sure that somebody is aware and managing that program, and that if somebody does call the city to let us know that camping's taking place on that property, that we're aware that the property owner has approved it. And then there's also allowance for residential zones, where any single-family residents can allow one family to camp in their backyard in a tent, or in the driveway in a motor vehicle. These provisions are all modeled after the ordinance that's in Eugene and that is successful today in that community. One of the things we learned from Eugene is that not only is it important to have discreet installations, so not, not more than three different vehicles or families on a property together, but also to provide provisions for, for the campers, and those provisions being dedicated sanitary facilities, dedicated garbage disposal services, and then a storage area for personal items. And that does two things, it provides what those campers need, and then it also helps to mitigate what people perceive as negative impact to neighboring property owners. A tent or a camping shelter in a residential backyard must be located five feet away from the property line, that's a typical setback we have for, for our residential areas. And then, any property owner participating in this program cannot require a payment of any fee, rent, or other monetary charge for the overnight sleeping. It really is a voluntary effort for property owners to step up and, and provide this as an opportunity for somebody. The property owner's rights and responsibilities for those who want to participate, the property owner, it's a voluntary program, so property owners can volunteer to participate, they can at any time revoke permission and for any reason, and to any person who had received permission to use the property, they'll receive notice and they need to leave the property within four hours. The city may also impose administrative civil penalties on property owners who fail to comply with the ordinance. So, if a neighbor sees a property owner who's participating in this program and they're not participating in the program per the provisions of the ordinance, the city can get involved, ask the property owner to participate within the provisions of the ordinance, if they choose not to, we can then revoke that opportunity for them to, to participate. Other provisions that are in the ordinance in front of you is the city manager may prohibit the overnight sleeping if the city finds that the activity is incompatible with adjacent properties or constitutes a nuisance. That's a provision that protects the neighboring property owners. The city can adopt administrative rules to implement this section of the code. One of the things we learned from Eugene is sometimes cities get really bogged down in trying to figure out how to create the perfect program without actually moving forward with an implementation. And to allow your code to be flexible enough that you can have administrative rules on the side, that you continue to work to, to make sure that you're able to respond in a, in a fairly timely manner to move a program forward successfully. The city manager may authorize overnight sleeping associated with a special event. And then there's a statement in the code that creates, that states that any duty on the part of the city or its agents to ensure the protection of persons or property is to the property owner. There is a section in the code that talks about prohibited camping, and one of the things we learned from Eugene is as you put a program together, for it to be successful, you need to have parameters for that program. And so, there is a section in the code that talks about, except as allowed under section, the section that describes the temporary camping program, or by any other provisions of the McMinnville code, no person shall camp in or upon any city property. The city manager or designated may temporarily authorize camping on city property by written order that specifies the time and location with respect to emergency circumstances, special events, or if it meets the council goals and policies. For your ordinance tonight, we do have two suggested amendments to the language in a further review of it. With this legal counsel, we are suggesting that we don't need a definition for a prohibited campsite, so to delete the whole section of 8.36.010 subset J. And then for 8.36.040 subsection C, to just clean up the language a little bit by saying the city manager or designated may adopt administrative rules to implement this section. In summary, this ordinance coming to you is a ordinance that enables a program that's a good-intentioned solution, to create a program whereby property owners can create a safe place for homeless families to camp in a temporary manner as they transition to permanent housing. There's been a lot of dialogue in this community about where people can and cannot camp, there's been a lot of discussion about how different agencies need to step up and respond to that. There's also been a lot, lot of dialogue from private property owners, as well as some of our faith-based community, about how they would like to step up and respond to that. And what this does is it really opens up the portal for everyone to do so that wants to. It also tries to mitigate negative impacts to surrounding property owners by addressing garbage, sanitation, and debris concerns. The program is not resource-intensive, it really is something that we can move forward with today, it's, it's real, it's based on good intentions and compassion, and it's community-minded, so it's the community coming together as the solution. It's modeled after a successful program in Eugene, and it was developed by the McMinnville Housing for Homeless Subcommittee and recommended by the McMinnville Affordable Housing Task Force, two groups comprised of community volunteers, meeting regularly to talk about solutions for this problem in our community. The partners we have thus far in this program, because this is based on partnerships, is that Recology, Recology has agreed to provide garbage disposal services for sites. So, one of our provisions is that property owners need to provide garbage disposal services. Recology has already agreed to provide that for free. Alan Rudinik, one of our private businesses, has agreed to fund the sanitation facilities for two sites for a year. So, another provision is to provide a porta potty or something like that at the campsites for a year. There are costs associated with that, a little less than a thousand dollars. Alan Rudin has stepped up to, to be a mentor for the private business community as to how they can partner as well in this program and provide those provisions for property owners who step up with their property. The champion team, one of our service providers in the community, has agreed to provide site management for property owners up to six sites. So, for those property owners who may be thinking about it and are concerned about how this program would move forward and how they would manage having campers on their property, the champion team has volunteered to step up and manage that for them. That would be a contract between the champion team and the property owner, but they have been working with the group in Eugene, talking to the staff down there about what works and what doesn't work, they're excited to be a partner in this program and see it be successful. What we don't have right now are properties. We have been out in dialogue with different property owners in the community, we've identified properties that we thought might be good potential opportunities for people to participate, we've been in discussion with the faith-based community, to have people step up as potential properties to participate in this program. And we're still in dialogue with many of them, they were looking for whether or not the city was going to move forward and enable this program, and I'm sure after this evening, if it does move forward successfully, we'll be able to finish those dialogues with several of the property owners. So, with that, that's the, the overview of the ordinance that's in front of you, some background as, as to how and why it came to you, as a recommendation through the different committees working for the city.
Thank you, Heather. This is what we're going to do at this point. I, I think in that Heather's discussion is so fresh on our mind, we can ask Heather questions that, of clarification. We have a number of, of the audience that have filled out public comment cards, and it is their comments to the council, we will not have a discussion, and we will hold each discussion to three minutes. We have many individuals, usually we have a 30-minute time for public comment, we'll try to go through all of those, but I will cut you off at three minutes. So, make sure you're concise, don't repeat necessarily things that have already been said. So, let's have an opportunity for questions or comments that the council has for Heather right now. Kelly?
Heather, would you mind going back and just, I'd like to see again what you were saying we would, maybe should remove from this?
Oh, the deletions?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, and I can keep that slide up if you're interested in it.
Yeah.
So, there's a definition under the definitions section for prohibited campsites, we don't feel that's necessary for the ordinance, and then there's some language cleanup for the last section of the ordinance altogether.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Makey, there was a revision put in front of everybody, unfortunately mislabeled ordinance 5058, it's actually 5057, but it does show the strikeout for those two sections that we're looking, that we're proposing, can come, should come out before adoption.
Okay. Other questions for Heather? Go ahead, Alan, then Wendy.
Heather, we had talked about the possibility of indemnifying
Sorry.
the property owners who volunteer their property, and that didn't seem to be possible. Is that the findings, such as a private property owner puts up their site, something happens, there's legal action, is there any way to indemnify the property owner?
I may defer that to our city council, it's legal counsel. Did you hear the question, David?
Counselor Rudin, if you would repeat the question.
Well, we had discussions in the committee about potential problems on the site, where someone has to be taken off and are no longer eligible to stay there because of breaking the, the rules. If there was some legal action brought, is there a way to indemnify that property owner against such action?
I am not in a position where I can provide legal advice to any property owner that would be seeking to participate in this program. I know one of the things that we have done, again, modeled after the Eugene approach, is to make it clear that we're not establishing a landlord-tenant relationship in these situations, which is why we prohibit the receipt of any payment. The creation of that landlord-tenant relationship could be a significant deterrent to folks allowing their property to be used because of the additional rights and responsibilities that come along with that. You know, beyond that, I think each, each entity or individual participating in this program is going to need to decide for themselves what their risks and liabilities are going to be participating in it.
It's something that came up and the committee was throwing their hands up, not knowing what to say about it, other than when you volunteer, you also volunteer, things will happen, and you just volunteer to help people out. So, I had another question on city property being used, such as a parking lot or something the city owns. What was up there was that it was prohibited under the program, except in emergency, temporary emergency situations, under the leadership of the city manager, or under the direction of the city manager? Is that, did I read that right?
So, what it does is it establishes this sort of blanket prohibition on city property initially, but the temporary camping program also allows a public agency to step forward and submit their properties to be part of it. So, there's a section in the code which states that the city manager can allow it upon finding it to be in the public interest and consistent with council goals and policies. So, the way that's interpreted by both the city of Eugene and the Affordable Housing Task Force when they were talking about this, is there's the opportunity for the city to individually talk about the properties that they would like to promote into the program, given that they follow the provisions and the rules.
Yes. Thank you.
Correct, and I would say, as written, the temporary camping program specifically authorizes real property developed and owned by a public agency, and the city of McMinnville is a public agency that would fall within that definition.
And there are other public agencies in the city limits, so...
Wendy?
First of all, I'd, I'd just like to acknowledge how much work has gone into this by Heather and by the rest of the community, and I really appreciate that. I know that it's been a long road, and I think this is a great product that has been produced. I did have a few questions in your conversations with the city of Eugene. I know a lot of the discussion we have heard has been around specifically the program where they partnered to do the mobile campsites with the nonprofit that was being managed, and they had additional rules and a process for approving people in that program. Did you have discussions about other camping that was outside of that program? Because this would allow other camping, that it's not part of the program that's being managed by that. Did you have discussions about what impact that had, or if they, you know, what activity happened around that outside of the program?
So, this, this ordinance is almost a verbatim emulation of the ordinance in Eugene.
Why did you create the wheel?
So, what's happening in Eugene with their, with their car camping program is the ordinance enables the program, just like this would here, and then they have a nonprofit who has stepped up and said, "We will partner with property owners who may be a little bit skittish about participating in the program," or, you know, a little bit anxious about how they're going to manage having people camping on their property, "we'll partner and we'll participate in that and help vet who, who camps on the property and provide case management or site management," that type of thing. That's sort of a separate entity over here altogether, and this ordinance doesn't disavow that, and the champion team is, is stepping up into that role here for the city of McMinnville. The ordinance in Eugene, which they didn't talk about this much when they were here, because it was really this focus of this relationship with St. Vincent de Paul and managing the car camping program for property owners who wanted to participate in it, also allows for the, for the camping on residential properties, and that occurs there, but it occurs in an organic manner, so they're not directly under the oversight of St. Vincent de Paul altogether. And because it's, it's one family, it's much more of a discreet installation, I had some conversations with city staff about, have you had a lot of concerns from neighbors who, you know, whose neighbor is participating in this program, or neighborhoods altogether? Because we did get a few phone calls in our office today about that, who, who were wondering how that would play out, and they haven't had a lot of concerns about that. Because the provisions are set up in such a way where sanitation needs to be provided, garbage disposal, and, and a storage for, for personal belongings, there really isn't that much... impact on the neighboring properties.
Okay.
I hope that answered your question.
Yeah.
In Eugene, they also have many properties that participate in the car camping program per what's allowed in the ordinance that aren't part of the St. Vincent de Paul program either.
Okay. And just clarification, with the six sites, that means, and on each site that the champion team is saying they would manage, on each site can be three, so that's about 18 management, potential management sites that they're talking about?
They are. So I don't want to speak for the champion team, and I'm not sure, Jeff, are they here?
Oh, I thought it said up to six.
Yeah, I don't know if anybody from champion team is.
So what they have done is they've calculated they can dedicate 15 hours a week to this program. And without knowing what that means for them yet, in terms of what the time would be required for each site, they've identified potentially will be able to do this. They want to understand what it means more as they bring the program online.
Do I understand that that, from them, that that limitation is merely based on their funding at this time? So they have the willingness to increase capacity if they have a more permanent funding stream?
Yes. So they're folding this into their program without any additional funds because they do want to see it be successful. That's what they feel they can manage within their existing structure, funding structure, and are actively seeking additional funds to grow the program as it grows here. The other discussion we had with the city of Eugene is that, and the city of Eugene's been working with many communities on implementing a similar program in their community like this to respond to this particular targeted niche need. Nobody expects that this is going to solve, provide housing for all people experiencing homelessness, nor is it the type of opportunity that everybody experiencing homelessness wants. But the one thing the city of Eugene has shared with us, that it starts small. I mean, it does start small. The property owners start trickling in. You have sort of what I would call the toe dippers, people who are willing to participate initially. Then there's demonstrate success, and others will follow. And so it started small in Eugene. It's a much larger program there now, and it has started smaller in other communities as well, and grows in those communities, too.
Any other clarifying questions?
I have.
Okay, go ahead, Remy, and then Sal. Thanks.
My question isn't actually based on what's before us, but you had mentioned at the beginning that there was some erroneous information in the community. And so what I've heard bits and pieces of is that specifically there was a kind of a fake city-looking document that was drawn up, shared on Facebook, and had something like 160 shares throughout our community that said that this would prohibit people from carrying sleeping bags and blankets and anything that would produce any kind of heat or shelter. And I'm wondering if you can just kind of address that since it came up earlier. And I mean, clearly, that's not part of this, but if you could expand on that a little bit more and maybe on the intention.
So I'll expand on the high level, and maybe legal counsel can dive deeper if we need to. I think what I saw and read was people concerned in the community that this effort wasn't something to help, but was to hinder. And that's where the concern was coming from. And I think it was mostly from a misunderstanding of what the intent of this program was. I don't know where the derivative for that came from initially, but I guess what I would say, the ground zero is everyone wants to help, and that's where the heart is. And it's just, you know, what is the solution and what's the outcome is sort of where people are sort of crossing hairs a little bit. In terms of what this achieves, currently camping is prohibited in our city parks, and campgrounds are prohibited in the city. So if somebody wanted to set something up, they couldn't. But this removes those barriers altogether for people to participate under certain provisions. I'll let David espouse further if he wants to on that.
I haven't seen the document that you're referring to, so I couldn't speak to it exactly, but some of the language that you mentioned in there comes from the definition of campsite in the ordinance. How that was taken in context, out of context, and put out there, I couldn't speak to.
Okay, Sal.
Thank you, Heather, for your work on this. I really appreciate everything that you're doing for the city. Have you identified, or has the city staff identified properties within the city for possible inclusion in the program?
Yes. So the Affordable Housing Task Force did sit down around a map of the city and identified potential partners and divvied up the ass. And we've been out asking and talking and visiting with different property owners about the fact that this program is being brought forward to city council and may become a reality, and would they be willing to participate, and what does that look like for them?
And so my impression is that part of the reason for bringing the ordinance forward now is to encourage some of those partners to step forward. This is partly an education process to encourage people who have been looking for opportunities to step forward.
Yeah. I mean, so this is the enabling piece of it in terms of the regulatory framework.
Thank you. And one bit of feedback, as I've been calling some of the churches to talk about the ordinance, specifically some of the ones in the downtown core, there were some reservations about the requirements that we include both sanitation and locker space essentially on-site. And there was some question that, given that there's already some sanitation and locker space clustered in the downtown, for example, FBC has sanitation and they have some lockers, would it be possible for a person, say, who was sheltered at a neighboring property, say first Presbyterian or cooperative ministries, to take advantage of pooling those types of resources? Or is that, is it possible to, it might be too complicated to envision that, but I'm just thinking about how it actually affects.
Right. So I'll let legal counsel, again, can address the legality of that. I will share with you, one of the things we heard from the city of Eugene is if you have too many campers using one sanitation facility, then that becomes very problematic. And it becomes very problematic in terms of impact. It's not as discreet, right? And also how to control the management of that sanitation facility. There has been, we have had discussions with providers of porta-potties here in the region about providing porta-potties for this program. They were a little anxious and skittish to do so because they've already done so in the past in some previous pilot projects in McMinnville, and those porta-potties were destroyed. And so one of the dialogues we've had with them is that this really, this ordinance is being set up in such a way that only three families at the most would be participating in the, using these sanitation facilities. They'll be locked, they'll only be available to those three families. So that's been a premise of the program since we've been putting it together, expanding it beyond there. I don't know what the legal piece of the code says, or whether that would practically be successful or not.
Thank you. I have a few more questions. Oh, did you?
Well, I could speak, I mean, I don't know that I'll be any more lightning than Heather was, but I would note that, you know, the, one of the requirements is that the property owner participating in the program must either provide or make available sanitary facilities. We've been vague in the ordinance provision about how that would be provided while providing authority to the city manager, or there does need to promulgate rules. I think part of that is to ensure that we have a flexible program, recognizing that, you know, we may have 12 different sites with 12 different sets of conditions, and we want to make sure that we have the flexibility to adapt to the conditions on each site, so long as, at the end of the day, we're satisfied that they're providing sanitary facilities for those that are camping on the property.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Heather, I just have a couple of more kind of generic questions. You've been working on, as a staff, staffing the homelessness and housing affordability subcommittees for quite a while. I mean, almost since you've gotten here, right? So you have developed some expertise. My impression is that one of the biggest challenges that we have in dealing with homelessness particularly is a lack of a dedicated revenue stream that we've been able to bring to bear. And I know that you've looked at a few different possible revenue streams going forward, but would you say that that's one of the biggest challenges that we have as a city to try and address this issue in a sustainable kind of long-term way?
It's a very complex issue. I think hard-dollar resources are part of that. A lot of people point to the city as the, as the agency for the hard-dollar resources, and we don't have a dedicated revenue stream. There are some programs we've been looking at that would yield some funds, that would help to underwrite things such as providing sanitation facilities for the different property owners and things like that. I don't think that any of us as partners here at the city have enough resources to build the amount of housing that we need to build in a fully subsidized way to solve the problem. However, there are other partners in the community who have done a great job of raising funds, multi-million dollars' worth of funds, to build things such as the Gospel Rescue Mission Shelter, which is a shelter that provides beds for families and people experiencing homelessness. And they're in a process of expansion right now. So there are places where resources are available and being dedicated. There are other places where people are pointing to, saying, "You should solve the problem and bring the resources to bear," where really, maybe that "you" isn't, that's not their particular role. But if they needed some additional funds to serve their role, the revenue stream doesn't currently exist. We are looking, for the city of McMinnville, we are looking at opportunities, and we're talking about that with the Affordable Housing Task Force right now, as something that we may bring here to city council for consideration.
So I guess where I was kind of going with that, thank you, by the way, is that it seems to me that this is something that we can do and make available to people on kind of an immediate time scale. And most of the other solutions that we're looking at, because they require a dedicated long-term revenue stream, have a bit of a longer time scale. And in some cases, that's kind of an uncertain revenue stream, because it might be coming from the county, it might be coming from the state, it might be coming from the federal government. And my understanding is that a lot of the kinds of housing projects that we might do require leveraging multiple different sources of revenue, and some of those projects can take years. Is that?
Yeah, you're exactly right. So where people point to, "We need to build this, that, or the other thing," putting a project like that together when it's 100% subsidized by public resources, it's a long haul. It's a long-term pickup.
So you see this, what we're doing, as an expansion in terms of making, enabling private owners, private property owners, including churches, businesses, residences, to make their space available, things that are currently not enabled under McMinnville statute? Is that?
Yeah. Yeah, what I, over the two, so I've been here for two years working with the committees, and I've, what I've heard here in McMinnville is a community with compassion that wants to help and find solutions. And what this program does is it allows people to participate and partner in what that solution is in a time when we don't have the hard dollars to build it, build the project.
Thank you, Heather, for your time.
Thank you, Sal. Any other comments?
I have a.
Okay, Remy, then Alan.
Okay. So this has come up a couple of different times, but just for clarity, as the conversation keeps looping back to what the faith-based community and private property owners can contribute, namely their, the use of their physical site, just want to clarify that the city can also lead in that by contributing a site for this program. Is that's correct in this ordinance?
The ordinance would enable that.
The ordinance would enable that. Okay. Well, as you know, I'm supportive of this ordinance. I also appreciate the tremendous amount of work that you in particular have done on this. And in addition to thinking that this program is something that can be a good step towards a more permanent housing solution for many people, I also hope that as a city and that we not only enable this ordinance, but that we sit down and review maybe that list of 57 city-owned sites that was in the previous resolution, and we find the one that we can start with as a city to launch this program on.
Thank you, Remy. Alan?
I'm in support of the ordinance also. One of the main things for me is that, and you said it right off the bat in your presentation, was that it's for temporary circumstances for families, and that it's not made to be permanent. It's supposed to be as a, another step that they need to take to get into a facility of some sort for longer durations of time. And so those who want to live a camping lifestyle for an enduring amount of time, they're not going to qualify. It's for those who's looking to try and upgrade a little bit in their lives, and as I see it, that is a good point. Thank you.
Any other comments? Let's now go to our public comments. Again, before we do that, I would like to make a part of the record, giving thanks to the McMinnville Affordable Housing Task Force. This task force has been engaged at a high level for much over a year. I'd like to thank staff that have given time and effort to this process, council that has been in numerous meetings and been a part of the Affordable Housing Task Force, and citizens with their input through letters and conversations with member of council and myself. I hope tonight brings a clarification of what we're trying to do that would be different than maybe what some of you have heard. We've tried to be very specific, and we're trying to come up with solutions this evening when it comes to the camping ordinance. So with that being said, we have, we have a number of people that would like to give comment. Three minutes, so I'm going to raise my hand. I'll go like that, and that gives you, that gives you 10 seconds, okay? And when I go like this, then I'm going to cut you off. I'd like all to have an opportunity to come before the council. And again, this is comments that's coming from you to us. It's not a question and answer, period. So our first comment this evening, and bear with me on your names with some of your signatures here, but Mandy, is it Goff? Mandy, if you'd come up? Go ahead. Welcome.
Thank you. So my name is Mandy Goff. I want to say I support the intention behind this program. However, I'm here to voice specific concerns with specific portions of this ordinance, not the ordinance in whole. So this temporary camping program may open a few sanctioned camping spots, which is fantastic for the few that may benefit, and I support that. However, given the safety and liability concerns property owners open themselves by participating, the cost of personal finances on property owners, and the lack of incentive provided by the city to participate, I think it's not reasonable to assume that the temporary camping program will have enough participation to provide enough slots for all homeless campers and sleepers, and that the vast majority of unsheltered persons, therefore, will need to continue to use city property locations to meet their life-sustaining activities. Until the city can show enough temporary camping locations that are sanctioned, come on board to provide a spot for every person experiencing street and vehicle homelessness that would like to participate, how can we even begin to have a conversation about prohibiting persons from using city property to camp and/or sleep? So to close, I really just want to voice objections with asking, and ask the council to remove from this ordinance specifically on page 95 of the packet, under prohibited camping, that's section A, that says, "Except for the provisions under this ordinance, no person shall camp in or upon city property." I think that needs to be reconsidered, because the vast majority of homeless sleepers and campers will still have no other options but to utilize city property to meet their life-sustaining activities, even when this program comes on board. And secondly, I ask that, under the penalties and enforcement section, again, on page 95, that the city council clarify Part A. And I ask that this council clarify and explicitly state that no homeless camper council clarify and explicitly state that no homeless camper, whether on the streets or in a vehicle, will be ticketed, fined, or given a Class C violation for simply existing on separate city property to meet their life-sustaining activities. So those two pieces of the ordinance, both on page 95, are what I feel we cannot support as an ethical community. And I think those two pieces of this ordinance will harm our most vulnerable residents as, and endanger their ability to meet their life-sustaining activities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mandy.
Thank you, Erin.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Good evening. I'm here as a member of the community to speak on behalf of those who can't speak for themselves. It seems as though people are only focused on the problem, that being homelessness, and not coming up with an actual solution to that problem.
Can you bring the mic closer to you, Erin? Thank you.
They want an actual, not coming up with an actual solution to that problem. They want a quick fix that looks nice, but does not actually solve anything. This appears to be a quick fix. And in turn, this will create a whole set of other difficulties. This is not a sprint to end homelessness. It is a marathon. It must be understood, it takes time to reach an actual conclusion. All we seem to be doing here is placing a bandage on the problem because it looks nice. No one is seeing the big picture, only the small optics it creates at this moment in time. This in no way solves anything. It just gives people a false belief that something has changed, which is not a solution. We must pose difficult questions, such as, what is the intent? What is the end state that we wish to achieve? Is the end state to bring about a true change for those experiencing homelessness, or is it simply to have it so that they are not seen? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Erin. Is it Sharon Wallace?
Sharon.
Okay.
Thank you. I'd like to address all of you wonderful folks-
Could you move the mic a little closer to you?
Absolutely. I have a different perspective.
Thank you.
I'm a volunteer with Project Able, and I have worked with our community. I realize that there is a huge HUD waiting list, helping hands. You can go to the mission, people aren't getting in, so what do they turn to but our parks? They're not safe, but they're safer than walking the streets every night. I've watched people sit there and say, "Yeah, I'm number 103." And when I listen, it's, it's temporary. If you have a car, yay, that's a step up. A lot of these people don't have a car. They don't have a tent. They have a blanket. They have a tarp. So this kind of makes me ill to think, yeah, you three people that can afford a car are blessed, and you're going to have someplace to go with a bathroom that locks. But those people that are sleeping with their tarp and their blanket are being told once again, "You don't matter. You might be able to find somebody willing to put up a tent and provide you, on their dime, a tent to sleep in their yard." Most people won't even give them a look because they smell. They're not clean. They've been walking the streets, and they've had it hard. They have to scrape through the dumpsters to get their next meal. These people really do need our help. So if you're going to open up a parking lot, let's give a shelter that can be really used by all. If you're going to have a tent, make it so that the person that's coming out of jail can have a place to sleep. That mom with two kids that doesn't have a car because she was in domestic violence can't stay at the Houston house anymore, or a Hudson house, or the YMCA because their time is up? They're leaving with the bag that they came in with, or one of these nice bags that somebody gives them and says, "Well, we're really sorry this happened to you, but here have a bag." So now everything they own is in that bag, be it their blanket, their pillow, their clothes, and they're sleeping in our parks. They might get hit at 3:00 AM with a sprinkler because they're on, because we don't want them there. So if we're really going to look at someplace, this is great. I'm not saying this isn't an answer. I'm not saying it's not a Band-Aid. But I'm saying that the person with the blanket that has a number, that's been told, "Your time is up, your two weeks' time is up," they come in for peer support, they're telling us what they're going through, that they're having to fit all the qualifications of what the mission wants, or St. Vincent's, and they're working the programs, and they're doing their time, they're going to their meetings. They're still homeless, still with a blanket and a tarp. I just ask that you think about them when you look at this ordinance. Let's make room for them, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Valerie Miller? Welcome.
My name is Valerie. This ordinance is, is very concerning to me because it is a dead end. Okay? There's, there is no funding, there's no property, there's no help. All you're going to do is put people in a financial place or a criminal place for a situation they can't help. There isn't enough housing for all of the homeless people here. There isn't. So I, I'm not exactly sure what this program is, is offering homeless people, because it's really not offering anything, except for people that don't want to see homeless people. Now, it's, it's really sad. I, I know that some areas in McMinnville have gotten to, I guess, a place where I'm not exactly comfortable with how they are living, but that doesn't mean that it's my place to, to put them somewhere, to put them in an institution, you know, or, or any of that. I've watched people over there get hit by cars, get trash thrown at them, and you think the community is going to help them? I've been, I myself have been slandered in the paper, been, you know, "Oh, could be a felon, could be a sex offender, vicious pit bull, throwing needles around." That's what was said about me in the newspaper in January, when none of those things were even true. But, and this is how the community sees people, and you think that there's going to be anybody that's going to stand up and say, "Well, I'll take these people in"? I don't think so. This is a dead end. You're criminalizing homelessness over and over again. And it's not right. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Valerie. Jessie Scott? Jessie Scott? Chief, Jeff Claiborne?
That card was for the easement consideration.
Thank you, Jeff. Jacob Miller?
Good evening. Well, I'd like to remind Heather of her own words. The issue that the community's having is the blanket prohibition, and everything that falls in that blanket prohibition. I wanted to thank you all, though, especially David Kouch, for reminding us, the people of McMinnville, that what's done here in this room is nothing more than an act, a theater, a fiction, or a lie. Your decisions have been made, but you will only allow comments from the people as a courtesy at your convenience. You remind them, they never, you remind us that we never meant to vest you, the council, with such a power, making the people's rights and personal freedoms void with your ordinances, taking it as far as banning or outlawing personal property that is used to sustain, sustain life. The people never put these things to a vote, and now realize through your actions and words that it wouldn't matter, it wouldn't make a difference, as it's been decided. The rest, a fiction that you act out as a courtesy. And look, here you go again, with an ordinance designed to persecute and oppress the most vulnerable of people, a group you have deemed as undesirable, attempting to outlaw personal property that is used for life-sustaining activity, in a hope that this continual persecution will coerce the people to leave or conform. This is just another way to criminalize poverty. Cloak is a solution, or a blanket prohibition. The ordinance is designed for arbitrary enforcement and applied discrimination, just like the RV ordinance has been applied. Who made you all here, Elohim? Who are you to attack the freedoms given to us by our Creator, and guaranteed by the Constitution of this state and this country? If you feel not bound by the first, haven't you guaranteed for your oath to the latter? Or is it, is your charter greater than these constitutions? Which has authority here? Who has authority here? If we can't trust you to adhere to the current laws, including the constitutions, then why should we believe your intent with what you present tonight? It really makes this homelessness task force look like more of a gang task force. You don't want them in your town? Make a move along.
Thank you. Russell McMillan?
My comment's already been answered.
Thank you, Russell. Catherine, is it, is it Martin?
Yes.
Go ahead, Catherine.
So I have to admit, I came in here pretty fired up. I, I was one of those people that are always on social media and saw that lovely little poster saying that you guys were out to basically criminalize homelessness. And I'm pretty passionate about the, the subject. I've done a lot of community outreach, volunteer work with the, the homeless, and it's just something that's very, very near and dear to my heart. And as an addict and recovery, I also understand that aspect of it. I'm not sure exactly what the answer to this problem, a growing epidemic is. I can't believe how much it's grown in McMinnville since I was born and raised here all those years ago. But it's very sad to me. I'm glad that the city of McMinnville is finally doing something. I'm not sure that what you guys have worked very, very hard to put together in this neat little package is the answer, but I guess we need to start somewhere. So I commend you for that. But like the representative from Project Able said, this doesn't really allow any room for those people who are not fortunate enough to have a vehicle, or the person that's getting out of jail and don't, doesn't even have the luxury of a tent, or a blanket, or whatever. And I know from my volunteer work that when people are in that situation, it's hard to even find someplace to go get a tent or a blanket. The, the resources in this town are very, very limited. So with that being said, I realize that there is no solution to this problem, but I am glad that it is starting somewhere. So thank you very much, Heather, for your, for your hard work. And I, with that being said, I guess the only solution that I can be is to, to volunteer to do anything. So you guys have my number. If there's any way that I can get involved with this, please let me know.
Thank you, Catherine. Is it Jamie Schwark?
Schwark.
Schwark. Jamie, welcome.
So I also saw the, the Facebook thing, but then I read the ordinance, and I realized that that wasn't the case. Although I do have a little bit of a concern of whether something could be misconstrued as camping by having a blanket on, say, like, a city bench, maybe not in a park, like, in the middle of the night, you know? So like, people are out at the bar, you know, they're welcome to sit next to Ben Franklin, you know? But if someone has a blanket, are they going to be harassed? And something that is concerning to me, especially with the winter months coming, I really don't appreciate the blanket ban necessarily, although I think that McMinnville has done a really good job of offering the resources that they have with all of the churches, for the soup kitchens, and I really appreciate all of those things for people. And even though that some of the gatherings in the courtyards and stuff has been problematic, I'm still glad that they helped people. But, so yeah, I have a concern of just someone being able to rest their head if they're not fortunate enough to be benefiting from this ordinance, that I, I really don't want to see someone die from exhaustion and freezing cold, you know, because they literally are not the beneficiary of this. My other concern is that the limit of three families, it's, I think it's a good to have a limit, but my concern would be if a property were to have a larger enough space that they would like to dedicate, could that be at any point moved to, say, four cars or five cars, with still an up, with still a limit, of course? But, you know, I feel like that's a pretty low, low limit to keep it to, and that would allow, cause a lot of things to be limited to having multiple properties be a part of this. And so I just, I would really like these things to be addressed. And I think that the efforts are not gone without being understood. And, but I, I just, I'm really concerned about our fellow citizens. So that's it.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thanks.
And our last comment this evening, Sage Kramer-Erner. Sage? Okay, those are the public comment cards that I received. Any other individuals that would like to comment to the council? Go ahead. Come up and state your name, your address, and we will hold you to the three-minute also. Thank you.
My name is Caroline O'Brien. I'm a McMinnville resident. Thank you for letting me say something. I had a question, a lot of research has gone into this, very well detailed. I would think that maybe we should also consider, as these people are being matched up with people they wish to help, that there need to be something in writing showing how you're going to match. I mean, if someone has three dogs, they probably shouldn't take in three cars that each have, I mean, little things like that. But this will improve the livability for everyone, not just the folks who are living in the tent, but for the neighbors around, the folks who are trying to help. I also think that because it's not just about homelessness that already exists, but it's preventing it, and we have obviously a, a limited amount of housing available. I think a major issue, not just in McMinnville, but in the United States, is that we need to look to legislation that says, if you're going to do business as a rental property owner or a rental property management company, then within these limits, you must adhere to rent control, because rent control will prevent the homelessness when someone has a major medical situation, and then they can no longer pay their rent because they're strapped. Let's do something to help people before they're in crisis, prevent the crisis, certainly deal with what we have now, but let's do something on a municipal level to help people avoid crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and your address.
My name, my name is Barry Lilly. I live at 629 Northwest Jason Court here in McMinnville. I have a couple of question, comments. I think this is a good start, but it seems to me the solution the city is coming up with, well, we'll just allow property owners to allow camping, and then we're done. We've solved the problem. We have not solved the problem till we find housing. I know that costs money, okay? Comment, it was mentioned that the First Baptist Church has sanitary facilities. I'm not a member there, but I volunteer every Monday and Friday at their breakfast, and the porta potty has been removed from the church parking lot, and I'm not sure why. I, I don't know all the story anyway, so I can't say why. But it was mentioned that we had sanitary facilities there, and we don't. I'm also, I am not clear yet, does this ordinance include what we read in the paper, that there will be a blanket and sleeping bag ban? The question, Ms. Drapkin asked the question, and it was avoided. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, one more. This will be the last comment. Your name and address, please.
My name is Liz Marilia Stein. I live at 1525 Northeast 18th Street here in McMinnville. And probably two months ago, I found out that the Compass Center that we've been working on for the last 10 years has been folded, that idea. I don't understand why, because that seemed, for so many years now, to be a solution to the problem that we are seeing now. I know that the Gospel Mission was the piece that was taken on by the council, but it does not solve what the Compass Center would have. And I'm just heartbroken about that.
Thank you. Okay, council, we're back to this point where any more discussion needed before we move forward?
I wouldn't mind adding just a few words-
Go ahead, Remy.
If it's all right. The word, I'm just going to start by saying the word blanket is getting used in a couple of different ways tonight, and I think that that's added a little bit of confusion. Blanket program, meaning a cover-all program, not a, not a program that's relating to anything that's actually covering a person. So- So just to specifically address the heating, the sleeping bags, the blankets themselves, there is absolutely nothing in this ordinance that prohibits people from getting that type of, having that type of warmth, or there's nothing related to that at all in this ordinance. I also want to say is, you know, having been fairly involved in this, in no way was this particular program meant to be one that could address every need for every person that is experiencing homelessness. In fact, as we originated this homeless subcommittee, one of the very first things that we talked about were the micropopulations that exist in the homeless community and how important it is to look at those different populations and try to meet the different needs through different programs. Because there simply is not one policy change or one thing that can be done that would end homelessness. I will say, short of a solution where somehow there's a magic amount of money that builds a bunch of houses and you house everybody, but from a realistic standpoint, we have to address and try to provide solutions for our homeless community members in bits and pieces. This is really being viewed as a transitional housing program. So it is specific to offering support to those that do still have the privilege of their vehicle or an RV. That was specifically the goal that was set out. That was the micropopulation where the committee said, what is a policy or a program that can be put into place that is supportive specifically for people that are living in their vehicles? And I also just want to note that the first time that this idea came up in subcommittee, it actually originated from a committee member that was formerly homeless. We certainly don't see this as a dead end. We know it's not going to address every person that is experiencing homelessness right now. The hope is that this will remove barriers so that we can start to offer some transitional housing for those that are experiencing homelessness, so that they don't have, if somebody's living in their RV, that they don't get a complaint call to the police department and ask to move multiple times in a day or a week, that there would be a place where somebody could safely have their home while they work on whatever it is that they need to move into a better situation. So I tried to kind of address some of the, some of the comments that I heard out there. I know Catherine Martin is gone, but I have to say that her expression of a willingness to get involved is very welcomed. That's something that we've really been looking for in finding more community partners and more people to step up. And this has not been any sort of quick fix. This has been a very intentional, thought-out program. And I really do hope that the council will pass this ordinance tonight, and then that we can start pulling together the different members of our community and that we can start providing some of that transitional housing right away to those that are in need and to those that will benefit and that want to get into a program like this. So thank you for the additional time.
Thank you, Remy. Council President Menke. Council Menke. Jacob? You've had your opportunity to speak. Council President Menke?
I just want to reiterate with Remy, we've both been on this committee for quite a while. Probably the most important thing this provision tonight does is it allows people to participate and to help. If you have that concern, if you want to step up and help, this provides that opportunity. And we're truly hoping that religious organizations, people grouped together, will offer that opportunity to some of the homeless, businesses that have the facilities will consider it, and that individuals will perhaps consider some relatives that are having a rough time or something like that in their own yards. So this is what really this provision is about, is to offer help to people on a level that maybe everybody can take.
Thank you, Kelly. Any other comments? Alan, then Sal.
Yeah, I know there's naysayers out here. We understand that. But without step A, you don't get to step B. And what this is, is a start. And there's been a lot of good work and participation by a lot of community members. And so I'm still in support of it. I think it's a good start. There's overwhelming homelessness. We're not trying to solve that as yet, but we are, in the short run, trying to make something happen to get more people involved. So I support what Kelly said and support the ordinance.
Thank you, Alan. Sal?
Colleagues, this is an absolutely heartbreaking issue for us to take up. A lot of folks in the audience have been pointing out the growth in homelessness in our city. I just want to say we're not alone. Oregon is third out of 50 states in the last two years in the growth of our unsheltered homeless population. We're now fourth out of 50 states in the total number of unsheltered homeless people in the state as a percentage of our overall state population. We're among the worst in the country at sheltering homeless veterans, families with children. These are all areas that we know that we need to improve. To Barry's point about this not, this being a final solution, this isn't a final solution. This is a first step. And it's a first step that we can take now. Not in two years, not when the federal government provides additional funding for homelessness through HUD, not when the state creates a revenue stream. It's something that we can do now. In the meantime, every member of this council is doing work to try and identify revenue for permanent and supportive, permanent and transitional supportive housing for people. Kelly Menke, last week, raised $30,000 or was contributed to raising $30,000 for the food bank. There is a lot of volunteer activity on this board, trying to work in a good faith manner to address this really, really challenging and persistent problem. And what we need as a community right now is your help. We need your help in dealing with this, identifying property owners who are willing to be part of the program. We need your help in caring for people who are the most vulnerable people in our city. As the people who are the elected representatives of this community, we're doing what we can, but we need more people to step up. We need more community partners to step forward and help us to take this on. And so this is really just a first step. We know that the problem has been growing, and we are trying to take steps, a lot of which aren't necessarily seen in these public meetings, to try and line up the resources to deal with the housing crisis in this city, to deal with the housing crisis, not just for our city, but for our region. So I appreciate the sentiment that motivated everybody to come out here. I thank you for your passion and your commitment to this issue, and I hope that you will work with us going forward to try and address it. Because I can tell you, today for me was heartbreaking. It was heartbreaking to see how all of the work that this committee, and particularly Remy Drabkin, has put in to trying to get this ordinance to counsel, the conversations that she's had trying to get property owners to come on board, to get churches to commit, to get people just to commit. So we need your help. And I guess with that, I'll leave it at that. It's my intention to vote yes on this, and we ask for the community's support.
Thank you, Sal. Any other comments? Adam?
So homelessness was definitely a strong issue before I decided to run two years ago, and it still is a growing issue in our city. And last year, I had the opportunity to attend a conference and a couple workshops with Council President Menke, where I was exposed to some options that Eugene was presenting at those workshops. And then Eugene came and presented with St. Vincent de Paul on this camping program. And I was apprehensive about it at first, just knowing, looking at other cities up and down the West Coast and issues they've faced, but I've appreciated all the work Heather Richards and Council Drabkin have put into this, as well as the committee and task force. And it's my intention to support this with a yes vote and also try and drum up some participating property owners.
Thank you, Adam. Any other comments? Wendy?
I don't think, my fellow counselors have made some really great points, and I am not able to convey them as eloquently as they have. But one thing that I would like to reiterate is that we know how deep this issue is. We know how much heart, we appreciate how much our community cares about our citizens, and we share your concern. This isn't, there is no intention to have this be a roadblock. It is very well researched, based on a program that has had a lot of success in another community that has similarly deep problems. And we're going to learn as we, as we work through this together. And so I'd like to encourage us to continue to have good dialogue in the McMinnville way, which is with respect and open ears. As we, I'm also in support of this. I know how much time and effort has been put in by not just Remy and Heather, but a lot of community members and also our partners in Eugene. So I'm in support of taking this first step, and there will be other steps that we need to take as a community. Remy has emphasized the importance of partnership. No one entity can do this alone. No one person can do this alone. The problem is just too deep. So that's just to support what other people in this room and other counselors have said. I think there is a lot more agreement than we felt tonight because of the emotion, but I think there's a lot more agreement here than we realize, and finding that agreement will help us to solve this together.
Thank you, Wendy. Just the closing comments before I ask for a motion. As a council, we represent a very dynamic community, one that has much history and much foresight and vision. We do not do things haphazardly. We go in with a vision, we go in for the long term. It has been proven time and time again. In my almost 14 years of being on the council or as mayor, this issue has been one that has had a deeper and more complete and exhaustive look at than any other issue that I remember for many, many years. We have been, from our perspective, transparent. We've opened all of our meetings up to anyone that would have input. We do not want to make decisions in closed rooms. And we have found, there's no solution to homelessness, there's no solution to those that fall on hard times. But we have a community that, as has been mentioned, has raised over a million dollars in finding a transitional program that can help people that want to be helped. We have breakfast, lunch, and dinners available for anyone that would have a need. We're not trying to sweep this away and walking away and say, well, we're done with this issue. As has been mentioned many times, this is just a beginning. We have followed a program that has had success. Why three vehicles at a location? Because it's been proven that that works. More than that, it doesn't work as good as three to four vehicles. We've listened very carefully. And so as mayor, I truly am, I'm saddened that we have to have this discussion, but I'm uplifted to the thought that we have made some headway, taking care of this dynamic community that we have. We're listening to both sides, all sides, and hopefully coming up with a step-by-step process to bring vision and success in this area to this community. And so with that being said, I will ask for a motion to pass ordinance number 5057 to a second reading.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to pass ordinance 5057 to a second reading.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Drabkin and Counselor Rudin has moved and seconded. All those in favor may signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed may signify by saying nay. This passing to a second reading has passed unanimously. So I will ask ordinance number 5057, again, has passed on the first reading unanimously. Now I will ask the city attorney to read the ordinance by title only.
This is a second reading of ordinance number 5057, an ordinance relating to camping within the city of McMinnville and establishing McMinnville Municipal Code, Chapter 8.36.
Thank you. I will ask for a motion to adopt ordinance number 5057.
I still move.
And second. The move has been moved by Council President Menke and seconded by Counselor Rudin. I will now ask the city recorder to poll the council.
Counselor Drabkin?
Aye.
Counselor Garvin?
Aye.
Counselor Peralta?
Aye.
Counselor Rudin?
Aye.
Counselor Stossens?
Aye.
Council President Menke?
Aye.
After the roll call, ordinance number 5057 has been approved by a vote of six to zero. Thank you. This concludes the, a portion of our, we still have advice and information, but we'll take a brief recess to allow those that want to go home and have joined us for this ordinance reading. We'll call back at 9:20. I just would like to share with you how I'm impressed with the dialogue that we had during this very, I think, appropriate discussion this evening, and how we listened and addressed many of the concerns. So this takes us to advice and informational items, and I would like to bring up one topic tonight that we've brought up numerous times, and I've talked to Jeff and David. I've talked to a couple of councilors about this, making sure it wasn't in a quorum setting. But I've asked our city attorney to come and share with us where we sit at the present time with those that have been ticketed in this city and have not paid their fines. Now, this includes cars that are parking downtown. This would include cars that are camping, and this would include RVs that are camping on our streets. And so I've asked David just to... It's an ongoing process. There's a lot of work. We don't have... It's not like pushing a button in a spreadsheet to come out. And so Eric has been working on that. But David, if you would just give us... And we can't hold him to these... All these numbers, but it gives you a big picture on this. So David?
And for your information as well, we have scheduled a work session to talk about this topic at your next council meeting. So we will dive into this a little more in depth, and we talk about parking enforcement in general. But the question has generally come up, you know, what tools do we have at our disposal for folks that are not paying parking tickets? Whether it be a BMW downtown, and yes, there's at least one of those on the list, or an RV out on Dustin Court that's parking illegally and getting tickets. And what I'll tell you is that there is a provision on the books that does authorize the city to impound vehicles if we find them parking illegally and we're aware that they have four or more unpaid parking tickets. And that's been on the books since 1972, but in nobody's memory has it been enforced. And the reality is that we don't have a good system of communicating between the police officer or the parking enforcement officer who's out on the street writing the tickets, and the court, municipal court staff that are the ones responsible for collecting payments on the fines. So we have an issue with an inability to have real-time conversations or information, I think, that is part of our issue. But generally, to give you an idea of the scope of the problem, as of Monday, there were fewer than 50 vehicles on the list with four or more unpaid parking tickets within the city of McMinnville. About half of those haven't had a ticket in the last two years, so they're rather old, which gives us, you know, in the low 20s, the number of vehicles... Sorry, I'm getting my numbers mixed up. But less than 30 vehicles total that have had recent parking ticket activity that have four or more parking tickets in the system. I'm sure the chief is looking at the email I sent him, worrying over all this stuff. I should probably pull that up myself. But they... There's a fairly even split between recreational vehicles, those are identified as recreational vehicles, and those that are identified as motor vehicles. What I will say about that, though, is even though the DMV may identify it as a motor vehicle, not a recreational vehicle, it may be a truck with a camper shell on it that is actually acting as a recreational vehicle, but it's classified by the DMV as a motor vehicle because of the type of vehicle it is. So I can't, at this point, give you the real numbers on that. But there is a discussion, I think, we need to have moving forward about what we want to do as a city for enforcement on those things, whether we're willing to make the investments that are necessary to do things other than tow, impound at a yard. If we want to boot vehicles... I know we don't have boot. We have one boot, and we use it for our mobile speed notification trailer. And then, you know, beyond that, there's also a real concern among the companies that do provide tow service, not just in this community, but all communities, about the cost of towing, storing, and disposing of recreational vehicles, which are very different than the process of towing, storing, and disposing of motor vehicles. And to the tune where it may cost anywhere from $1,000, $2,000, or upward, depending on the size and the age of the motor home or recreational vehicle to dispose of it, if it's not claimed and unpaid tickets are not paid on it, and impound charges and whatnot. So we'll be prepared to have a larger conversation with you about that at the work session on September 11th. But just to kind of give you a sense of the scope of it. Yes, Kelly?
We've had two amnesties, haven't we? Because I know we have quite an accounts receivable in regard to parking fines that... On a very wide scope of vehicles. Certainly, the homeless situation maybe in the last five years has been significant, but there's been a number of opportunities, and people that have extensive fines from prior took no advantage of the amnesty evidently. And I just have to kind of ponder that, you know, this probably is something we take a serious look at just from an enforcement standpoint, and, you know, why bother to issue citations if we're not going to actually do some enforcement?
And I'll just chime in on that. From my perspective, you know, if we're not enforcing it, then it really doesn't carry much weight. And so what I would ask us to do in preparation for our work session coming up, Captain Simon had given us a sheet that took a look at, it looks to me, about 10 communities and what their camping fee structure looked like. And I just thought that if you don't have that, then maybe, Jeff, we can get that back out. And just to take a look at, be prepared to understand that, we are in... I am in... I have received a letter formally from YCAP since Jeff Sargent has left, sharing concerns. McMinnville Water and Light is putting together a very extensive document, sharing their concerns and what they've had to do out there. Dean has shared for all of us numerous emails, and he's been the most patient man I know on the face of this earth. And we will be meeting with Dean, because there's indication that he's not going to be able to spray his fields, because no one will spray fields with people living in the field. And so there's a real concern. So in the very near future, we, Jeff, I, and Kelly, and David, will probably meet with Dean to get a sense of the damages to his property. We're to a point where tonight, we have a camping ordinance. We need to look at the next piece, and we need to look at it as thoughtfully, and as transparent, and as thoroughly as we've done everything else. But all the communities around us that are larger in scope have a fee structure that would be appropriate. We have some of those RVers that are paying their fees on a weekly basis and are current, and we have others that have just not even addressed it at all. So it's another issue, I think, for us to be fully aware of the concerns in our community we need to look at. And so I'll just throw that out. No further discussion. It's late tonight, but I wanted to set the tone to look at this and put your thoughts together as we have a thoughtful dialogue at our next work session, which would be before our next city council in September. Any questions or comments around that?
The only comment I would make is that I would have concerns about going forward with booting or impounding vehicles in the case of people who are experiencing economic hardship. I don't think it would be very easy for me to get to a yes on that kind of an expansion. So I'll just lay that kind of bias out there right up front.
And there are others that have a bias on the other side.
I understand, but I'm just kind of letting...
So it needs to be a discussion that's talked about with transparency, and we weigh those things out as we go into this discussion. But definitely, it is something that if we don't continue, as we said, we didn't pass an ordinance tonight to walk away and say, "We're not going to deal with anything." We need to take a look at the whole situation that's out in front of us.
I would agree with that, Mayor, but I would also say that the public's not wrong, that we've gone a lot further towards strengthening the enforcement side than we're able to on the accommodation side, given the circumstances. So I'm a little hesitant about going too far down one path without any ability to deal with the other aspect of that equation.
And so good discussion, I think, we'll have. So I wanted to put... Let you think about this and do your homework, so to speak, over the next two weeks, so from that perspective. Okay, let's go and have reports from councilors on committee and board assignments. And I'll start with Adam. Anything to report?
We had lack of quorum at YCOM, so we did not have a meeting.
No report.
But the director did send out some notes, because she was gone for that meeting. I think she had oral surgery that day, so wasn't able to talk, even if we had the meeting. Tri-Tex moved along. There's been some other staff on site helping with the transition, and it seems like everything's on schedule. So hopefully by our next meeting, I'll have some very in-depth news, since we haven't met for a few months.
Thank you. Sal?
I've had a lot of productive conversations with state policymakers and some city councilors on housing affordability and homelessness, and identifying state-level revenue streams. In particular, there's an education committee that's dealing with stability that our state... One of our state senators, who kind of joins the areas on, and he's identified a substantial portion of funding for permanent and transitional supportive housing, coming out of that conversation. And we've also identified one other possible revenue stream, so.
Thank you for all that work. Kelly?
Well, I'm going to speak on the Affordable Housing Committee, simply because I've been pretty busy in the last week trying to... We're basically reconstituting the committee. Remy and I met. I'm not sure why Ellen wasn't there, but it was kind of like a discussion amongst two people that are remaining, so to speak, on the committee. For various reasons, people have left. They've changed jobs or whatever. So she and I have been actively out pursuing new prospects, and we've gotten, I think, almost a full committee at this point, as possibilities, so.
If you have names, right?
We have names. We have people that have said, "Yes, I'm interested." So that's a good thing. And we're enthused about that. We're looking towards October as probably being our first major meeting all together to kind of start talking about inclusionary zoning and some other things. So we're excited about that. And I'll leave whatever is left for Remy to discuss. Just spending time, much like Sal, whenever an opportunity comes up, talking about anything we could do to get money or land for affordable housing, for... Not affordable housing, but for probably more subsidized type of housing.
Thank you. There was a mention you were involved in a fundraising activity. You want to report on that?
Yes, it's for the soup kitchen, not the food bank.
I'm sorry.
You're in so much trouble. Yeah, no, we did very well. We made about $30,000. We're... I was really pleased, considering three days before, I was crying in my soup about it, but it turned out well.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thanks to all who participated. There are a number of you in the room.
Wendy?
I don't have anything to report at this time. Our first... Our next meeting for the Urban Newell Advisory Committee is the beginning of the month, the first Wednesday, so I will for next meeting.
Okay. Remy?
In addition to what Kelly said, which I think is great, I do... I have continued and am continuing to meet with some of the potential future partners for the city for this ordinance 5057, which passed tonight. And I'd like to just restate what I said earlier, which is I do think it is very important at this time that we, as a community, as a body, and as a city, figure out where we can put a pilot project. The only thing we are lacking now is the site, and I think that it would show great leadership to find one parking space, two parking spaces, on a city-owned property and launch a pilot project. So I would really like to encourage everybody here to... I don't know what needs to happen. Harass... Who do we have to harass?
Harass, harass, harass.
But to... You know, I've also had a lot of conversations with people that, you know, the truth is, is that every conversation I have about this is the same, which is that it's great, it just doesn't work on my site. So we need to provide that first site now.
Well put. Thank you, Remy. Alan?
I'm with Remy. Good job. I finally have a pretty good agenda for Airport Commission meeting, after our last two meetings have been canceled due to the lack of an agenda. But we've got a good agenda, and we've got a presentation by a potential purchaser of one of the buildings. purchaser of one of the buildings and hangars out there. So that'll be nice. That'll be on the 4th of September.
Alan, can you tell us what that building is, their building out there? Is that a new hanger?
I don't know.
Okay.
Adam, do you know?
That's one of the hangars we approved of the Pot Cake Farms deal that prompted the renewable leases options for the existing hangars.
Yeah.
Great.
Pot Cake, yep. So the, the potential buyer contacted me and said, what do you know about Pot Cake? What are they, what are they into? And I go, it's not pot, and it's not cakes. They're well-funded, highly experienced business people. So anyway, it looks good, it looks good for this company to come on board in McMinnville.
Great, that's a positive move.
Yeah.
Okay, from my perspective, Visit McMinnville, Jeff Knapp went in the hospital and had an infection with his back surgery, and I think he just got out of the hospital today. So we did not have a Visit McMinnville meeting this month. Kelly and I had an opportunity to go to the Landscape Review Committee, which was probably one of the largest we've had for that, that little community. We were over in the conference room at the police station, and they were dealing with the apartment complex going out on Fur Crest, out by the museum, and the ramifications of taking down some of those natu- natural barriers, the trees that were there. But when it was all said and done, the developer was there, a very, very well-spoken, and really gave kudos to the planning department for how easy it is to, to work and, and deal in the city of McMinnville. This individual's out of Corvallis.
But even was interested in more affordable type of housing product.
So good from that perspective. Jeff, I'm going to move to you first, because we've got a, a new employee to introduce to the council.
So some of you got a chance to meet Kylie Bayer-Futterer across the room at your work session last week. She is our newly-minted Human Resources Manager. Today is day seven plus in the office, and her first, and her first official city council meeting. So Kylie come to, comes to us from a long-ish and distinguished career at Twalatin Hills Parks and Recreation District, and we're excited to have her in the organization.
And?
Welcome.
And?
And she has a mastiff named Remy.
Yes.
That's right.
And, and Remy and I have posed together for photos on Instagram.
That's what I'm learning.
And you can follow her dog, Remy, on Instagram.
Yeah, I don't subscribe to the Insta chat thing, so.
There's an age barrier there, I think.
Jeff, you're the most active person on Instagram, I know.
So let's go, Chief, anything for the good of this evening?
Yeah, just, I haven't been here for a couple meetings, so I'll just give you some updates. I'll share the, I think, one of the cooler ones for last, I just, real quickly, updates on our park ranger program. It's been very successful this spring and into the summer. We've got a couple more months in it, and right now, for this year at least, we're under budget, and I think the park system, if you had a chance to talk or been in the parks, they've been really nice, and although sometimes things bubble up, our park rangers, the six or seven of them have been consistently out there engaging and doing really good things for the citizens. So that's a plus. Some training stuff, we have, we're, we're starting to get people out of the academy and into cars. We've got four people that are currently in what we'll call the field training process. We've got one that's in the academy, and then ones that is, we just hired within the last month, that's doing pre-academy on the way to the academy. Good news is that we'll be offering a, an unconditional to a lateral hire, likely tomorrow, he's got eight years. So very positive, that'll be expediting somebody on the road. Couple things, which leads me to, I think, probably the coolest thing, is with the work of the city manager, Mr. Kosch, myself, and, and some city staff, the police department staff specifically, this week, last week, we agreed with the district through an intergovernment agreement to add a second middle school, school resource officer, something that we haven't had in, in about a decade. I believe that the, the, your allowance and our ability to bring on some new hires has given us some flexibility that we hadn't had in the past, which I think is critically needed in that middle school age right now. That middle school officer, school resource officer is Greg Park, he's been with us for a year now, but he's been with the sheriff's office prior to that for about six years. So he's really excited to get in there. And one of the neat things about this middle school resource officer is that the district and us both agree that, as time allows, this middle school resource officer has the ability to reach down into those elementary schools and maybe have some impact, you know, talks or just dialogue with those kids at an early age to, to see the positive, hopefully, we'll see the positive effects with that down the road. So a lot of good work, a lot of long meetings, a lot of fun negotiations, but we got there and we're excited to offer that and partner with the school district. So that's what I've got right now.
Thank you, Chief. Kylie, anything from the HR? I mean, it's been a week and a half or so, hasn't it?
Seven days. I have a whole lot to report, I'm just standing here, I'm really asking them to join me.
Thank you. Melissa? David?
Yes, sir.
And Jeff?
So just a heads up, we'll be presenting a status report on the strategic plan to you at your September 11th meeting. The executive team has been involved in brainstorming a variety of actions and projects that support the initiatives that the council has seen through the work thus far. It's going to be a pretty lengthy and detailed document, the actions are draft, they haven't been prioritized, they haven't been evaluated for whether they should be owned by the city or just supported. We haven't put together the kind of work plans and performance measures and timelines that will come to you in a plan that you can adopt, but we wanted to give you that information in advance. Because there's going to be a lot of detail, we're going to send it out in advance of the packet in a couple of different emails, so you can start doing some of your reading in advance. If you have questions, I would say note them and hold them for the presentation, because some of the documents may change before they go into the packet. So we'll probab- we'll send the first batch out to you tomorrow, and they'll probably come to you in a series of two and maybe three emails during the course of the next week or week and a half, and then there'll be a full packet that goes out in advance of the September 11th meeting. So just a little early reading pleasure about the strategic plan.
Thank you, Jeff. One last question I had in today's, this evening's paper, there was an article that made a lot of references to what I picked up as the most recent homeless report for the county. Have they sent out that report to your knowledge yet?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, they sent the pick count out. I've seen it.
I haven't seen it, they haven't sent it to me, so.
Because I haven't seen it.
I would think that that would be something that we'd like to get ahold of.
Yeah, usually YCAP sends it to us as soon as they release it.
Yeah. So I, I just, I saw that article that was very driven with current numbers for the article that they were doing today.
Yeah, no, they, they haven't sent anything directly to the city, to my knowledge.
Okay. With that, I'll adjourn the meeting, and thank you for your participation.